Good evening. It is Monday, October 20th, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. The first item on the agenda is a discussion item, subdivision rules and regulations update. Anything new there, Alan?
Yes, I was able to meet with Bill and the town engineer in the field a week and a half ago, I think, maybe almost two weeks ago. I can't remember which. Bill had nine subdivisions. He wanted to kind of take us on a little show and tell. We were able to do four, and I did the other five myself this weekend. So I've done my data collection. I have all my notes and photos. I just need to kind of pull together a package to share with Bill and Karina. And then when we're ready, we can present to the Board. So that's the subdivision review. And then one of the other things Bill had on his personal list, I think I alluded to this last time, is looking at our A&R process. So I looked at our A&R process plus a couple of our peers. And so I've shared some notes with Bill also. Same thing. Let's make sure we're kind of in agreement, have a discussion, and then share with the Board. So pretty good progress since the last time we met.
Great, thank you. I did a long time ago, share an A&R update with you, like adding more of what we need to look for in order to approve.
Okay, I might have been right when I joined. I'll go back and find that email, and I'll put it in with the whole packet.
Okay.
If you can't find it, let me know now.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else have anything on Ms. Houlihan? Thank you, Alan. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 55 and plus housing bylaw update with the Affordable Housing Trust. Ms. Houlihan?
I have zero updates, just again, because we're focusing solely right now on the October 27th special town meeting. So, thank you. So we haven't addressed anything there.
Yeah, I watched the last Affordable Housing Trust meeting, and they said the same thing after the special town meeting. Alan was going to reach back out to you, and you two could get back at it. Any other questions or comments on that?
Just an update on the housing production plan. So the EOHLC opined back to the Affordable Housing Trust, a few minor comments and revisions that they were looking for. And I think they're working on those as well.
And the next discussion item may be the same thing, industrial park expanded uses. Ms. Houlihan?
I think the bylaw was in a really good state where we left it, but we agreed to remove it from the October 27th special town meeting. It'll be prepared for the annual town meeting. And I think we can resume those discussions before a public hearing coming after, maintain this discussion. But right now, there's no update.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions or comments on that? That was quick. It is now 6:35. Public hearing starts at 7:00. Would you like to do the planners' report, Karina? Oh, wildly unw.
So quickly, one of the things that came through Mass Planners Forum was a question from another town saying, should there be fees related to continuances? Yeah, and I think that it's a good incentive. I'm not sure. It hasn't been really thought out yet in my mind. But what happens is when you have continuation after continuation after continuation, it provides, you know, we have to do kind of like mobilization every meeting. It might be a way to incentivize continuances to be a little bit more restricted, a little bit more tended to. So that was one of the things, just food for thought if you have any thoughts on that.
Actually, what is the process to that? Like, what is that? Is that just a town-by-town decision, or is that a Massachusetts kind of thing that would happen?
To charge?
Yeah.
P for it? I don't know yet. I just are in the Mass Planners Forum today. Yeah, it was today.
Someone just asked a question, and then people will. I've never heard of it before, so we'll see what comes in.
Yeah, they'll have a lot of responses to that, hopefully, that we can see, and then go to a town that maybe already implements it and see what they're doing. As far as the MWRC Communications and Engagement Project, Mimi has some good news. Southborough was selected.
We were picked. We won the lottery. So Southborough, Wellesley, and Natick. And I forwarded that email to Andrew Dennington, the Select Board Chair, Mark Purple, Vanessa Hill, and Sam, who's the collaborative Select Board rep today, asking if Vanessa would be the point person, because it seemed like at the Select Board meeting, they were intimating it would be her. But I just wanted to make sure with Andrew. Vanessa responded. She's, you know, excited about it. I'm just waiting to hear back from Andrew. So that will be, that'll be great.
All right. Next thing. I sent Planning Board members an email with some links to land reform bills that are currently in front of legislation, in case you wanted to peruse those. One of the big ones that would impact Planning Board is the site plan review, codifying that in master of the law, like the special permit requirements are. So that's just for your information. We did have a department head meeting on October 15th last week. And one of the things is that the budgets will be coming up for renewal. We'll be getting a budget memo soon. So I'll be preparing a revised memo. And if one of the Planning Board members, if Amani wants to continue working with me on that, then we'll... Okay. I'm happy to also, on that same note, we had ARPA funding for GIS mapping updates. We've almost exhausted that after an invoice today. We also have a kind of a smaller project too, with Lucas and Vimental, to do the deed research database update. So they've been waiting on me to get them open space information. So we'll get that done in the next two months, because it's due by full Christmas, to have that ARPA money expended. So not to worry. Coming up. Let's see if there's anything else here. Let's see. In your packets, we gave you a copy of the printed warrant. It's gray. And HCP update. Okay, sorry. I'm in my daily mode. I'm always like... Okay. Oh, and the other thing is, we're starting to, I haven't really started yet, but Mimi and I did meet with the Department of Energy Resources with the regional coordinator. And there's regulations that have been passed for a new way to handle when, what do you call it, ESS, like battery, battery storage, right? Those types of projects come in. It's going to be sort of handled almost like Dover, where they're going to be able to be cited in any zone, that kind of an approach. So we're just starting to look at it. We're getting a lot of information on workshops and such, and I'm forwarding to the Planning Board as it comes in. But I'm going to start focusing on that too, right after the special town meeting.
Yeah, if they have, if any of the energy being stored comes from solar at all, like 1%, then it falls under solar, under the Dover-like.
Yeah, they made it very low bar to meet the Dover requirements. So they recently had a public hearing for that, the EOHLC, well, the Department of Energy Resources. They had a public hearing and invited comments. And then they actually put forward links to the regulations, and draft bylaws and things like that. So we'll get working on that soon.
Something fun to look forward to.
Yeah. And that's pretty much it. We do have meeting minutes. We have one set of meeting minutes. These are the meeting minutes from September 29th. Which was a long meeting.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 29th, 2025.
May I make a comment, or a question, actually?
Sure.
These are the minutes, I believe, where we had a letter that was read into the record. So I just have a question on that. I don't know if it's taken verbatim and put into our minutes, or would the proper thing to be to attach the letter, because...
That was, that was my comment, to delete lines 189 to 295. Just say that that letter was read into the record, and it's attached to the minutes per bylaw. Yeah. That was one of my comments.
What line was that in?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. What line was that you said, starting at?
Oh, delete 189 to 295.
Colleen, that's the letter from Shannon.
Yep.
And then you'll have to add it.
And then on line 188, I would put attached to these minutes. Can't read my writing. Concerning the zoning amendment that is a letter concerning the zoning amendment would be illegal spot zoning, or something referring to that letter, and that it's attached to the...
Mimi, wouldn't it just fall under the documents used at this meeting?
Well, I think that, yeah, I think we can call out that it was read into the record.
Yes, okay.
I have other edits. Does anybody else have any? 15 minutes worth. Okay. Line 1416, 39, 59, and 63. Chris Leroy's name is misspelled. It's all lowercase, no capital R. Did you get that, Colleen?
I did, thank you.
Okay, and then on line 53, it said, Ms. Latrell said she would have the Planning Board vote on the issue. But I said that it would be up to the tree warden, whether that was an objection filed or not, and the Planning Board would vote on whether to remove the tree or not, not on whether there was an objection.
Gotcha.
Line 153. It says Mr. Zinc, but I don't believe it was Mr. Zinc. I think it was Attorney McKenna that spoke to the spot zoning.
Okay.
It was, I actually went back and watched the meeting, so it was. Line 166. Oh, this is backwards. So the Planning Board, I would put instead on line 166, the Planning Board has sole jurisdiction over site plan, and should also be the special permit granting authority for a consolidated, more efficient process that is advantageous to business, or something along those lines. Because it says we should be... Yeah, it says we should also be the site plan authority, but we are always the site plan authority. So we should also be the special permit. And line 322. Oh, asked about the size of an ADU, and Ms. Houlihan and Ms. Latrell explained this especially for a historic home. I think what we explained was the special permit standards are remaining the same. And then delete the rest of 323 and 324. And that's all I got. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
With edits, any further question or comment? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demirio, yes. Rachio, yes.
Donnyak, yes.
Can I ask a question? So we've had it before discussed on the planners' report. It's just an update on the corner of Parkerville and Route 9. So now they have Xs all over for demolition, the old car condo building. And it's still just a nightmare. So I'm just curious if you've had any updates on that property?
They have filed a demolition permit with the building department.
Okay.
I don't know to what extent the status is, but as far as the current owner, I don't believe they'll be moving forward with the car condos. I believe they're trying to sell the property. There've been a handful of calls that we've received regarding the property of new developers or investors in that space. So it's still to be determined. With the transitioning of the building commissioner, I'm not sure how far they've been able to take it so far for the demo. But it is slated for demolition, and they have applied.
And Karina, just in that process, once you put in a demo, every kind of board department has to weigh in on a demolition. Is that true?
Except for like Youth and Family Service.
Right, right. Just kind of standard, okay. Like, they have to like check a box or something through an electronic process?
If the building department has it set up for that.
Okay.
So I often get all of, a lot of them.
Okay.
For input, but I can't say that I get all of them. I pay attention to that one, because it was before the set, before the Planning Board.
Okay.
So I'll follow up.
Yeah, no, I just, it's, I don't know if you guys notice it. It's just such an eyesore.
Amani.
It continues to get worse.
Amani, this is Colleen. They also have to go through a lot of mitigation, you know, for the rodents, for any sort of, you know, asbestos or something like that. So it can take a little while on the demolition permit.
Right, because they have to do all, they have to cap, they have to cap all the services going in. They have to make sure they know where everything is.
Okay.
Right? And then if there were any hazardous materials, A, they have to check for it, like Colleen says, but then B, they have to remediate. So I'm not aware of anything there, as far as I'm, as far as I know, but I don't have all the details.
Oh, appreciate it. There were big trucks out there at like 4:30 this morning, so that's why I was a little curious. But nothing happened. Yeah, my way to the gym, I saw them, so. Oh, with another next five minutes.
So we have special town meeting on Monday, which will be this highly anticipated highway major retail zoning change. The senior center is having a forum on this tomorrow at 1:00 PM, for anyone looking for further information.
Warrants are printed and available for the public. They're gray this year. The warrant is relatively short, knock on wood, as far as table of contents is concerned. And the two articles that the Planning Board is most involved with is Article 1, which is the highway major retail use, and Number 9, which was formerly Article 10, the ADU bylaw, is now Article 9. And a handout has been prepared. So that'll be at the town meeting on one of the tables for that.
Mimi, can I add something under that, going back to the solar?
Please, please do.
Back to the solar battery storage discussion. So ironically, my husband will be back in Massachusetts in November, and his next project is overseeing five of those specific sites. So if the Board's interested or has questions, I would love to volunteer him to come in and, you know, answer those questions, because that's what he's going to be doing for the next six months. He's got five of these sites that they're doing them on, Uxbridge, Charlton, I can't remember where the other three are. But yeah, so, you know, again, just to get an idea of, you know, more of the, without being too technical, what, you know, what it is. So I would be happy to volunteer him to do that if the Board would be interested in that. I'm sorry? Of course he would. Come on, come on. He's my husband. Of course he would. He'd be thrilled to say, yes, Lisa, thank you. This is recorded. Now I'm in big trouble. But anyway, yeah, he would, he would probably...
Thank you, Matt, through Lisa.
Thank you. He would perfectly be happy to do it, no?
I think that's a fabulous idea. I don't know anything about them, except for they burst into flames like on that Chinese plane, the lithium batteries. So it would be good to...
Yeah, I'll let him know. He'll be home in November, so finishing up where he's at in Pennsylvania. So, yeah, I'll check his schedule and coordinate with you, Mimi, and he might just be able to answer a few questions. That's all. Thank you.
We've also had some inquiries as to, for sole locations in Southborough as well, from people who develop those systems. And then they look for properties that they might be viable for in town. And just so you know, just reading from the email that, from Mass Planners Forum, says, because the law and these draft regulations institutes a substantive, substantive change to the local permitting process, the Department of Energy Resources is hosting a series of public information sessions in the coming weeks to go over proposals and feedback, and just general information, similar to MBTA communities. But I think this is much more specific and contained, as opposed to, you know, this would be more like a where you allow it, or, well, not where you allow, because it's allowed in any zone, I believe.
So is that, does that go, is that already in effect, or does that have a future date that it goes into effect?
Well, this is an old email. I think that it's, the regulations are already promulgated, because they did hold the public hearing. So now it's similar. They have, you know, the regulations out there, and assistance with modifying your bylaw, if you need it.
But if someone came forward tomorrow?
I don't know.
Okay.
Look, that I have to find out. See what it says here. Let me see. No, it's not in this particular information. But it was coming from the 2024 climate law. So I think the regulations are no longer draft. So if, I'm 99% sure that they're regulations now. But we're supposed to have until, I thought, the end of this year to get them in, or maybe next, next, next May, March? I don't know. I don't have all the information on it yet. I've been setting that all into one pile.
Karina, are you hearing of any communities that are starting to draft those bylaws yet?
I haven't, I haven't, but I'm sure there are, yeah. I can tell you. See if I can find it for you. Bylaws. Give me one second. Here it is. Okay. So the most recent email
Madam Chair, while Karina looks, I have a separate question, but it's probably question and answer. So with special town meeting starting at 6:30 next week, and we have a meeting the same night, what time do we meet?
We meet at 5:30.
5:30, okay. I couldn't find it anywhere, so I just wanted to check.
No, typically one hour before the town meeting starts, and we're in Room 128. And we'll be posting an agenda probably tomorrow. Wednesday is the deadline for next week.
Thank you.
Okay. It says here that the regulation state municipalities must comply with the standards and practices established in these regs, and effectively the guidance documents by no later than December 1st, 2026. So it is a whole year. I got, I thought it was this year. Local governments would be able to set additional requirements or conditions, but only if they do not conflict with the regulations or guidelines. Five of the guidance documents are yet to be released. This complicates their ability to review the, our ability to review these regulations in depth within the given public comment period. This was October 9th. Additional information on submitting comments can be found at the Clean Energy Siting and Permitting Regulations webpage. So we have until the December 2026. And knock on wood, but I don't think these will be as intense, because they're already pretty defined, as opposed to picking locations where overlay districts would work. It's a little bit different animal. Well, planning will get better at anticipating these timeframes in the future. Sometimes they're easier to predict. But my apologies. I don't want to waste anybody's time.
Karina, if that were the case, I think we'd all play the lottery. We wouldn't be volunteering for our town right now.
And it is 7 o'clock. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, proposed zoning amendment to amend language, oops, to add highway major retail 174-2B definitions and a use requiring special permit under 174-8.6, industrial park district. You want to bring us up to date, Karina?
Yes, if you recall, at the last here, public meeting, Planning Board meeting, there was a letter written into record, read into record from Shannon Boyce, representing Capital Group Properties. And based on that, we had requested a legal opinion from Town Council to opine on that letter. Town Council has opined. We received an email earlier today, this afternoon, indicating, well, I don't want to ad lib it, but generally, he doesn't believe it's spot zoning either. And the other thing is, we're working, version 9 is what got printed into the warrant. There were some very minor edits. There was reference in two places that said, in this bylaw, and it was really the zoning bylaw, so it didn't refer back to itself. And I think there was one other small... Oh, some commas. Yeah, there was a comma missing somewhere, so it made it clearer. So that's how it was printed in the warrant. Was there anything else? There were questions as to presentation and who would be attending town meetings, so we can clarify that. It's a Select Board sponsored article, and we will... And we will have a draft report to town meeting from the planning board, which is very simple vote to support or not, with a tally of the vote that gets read at town meeting. So other than that, nothing really new.
Thank you. I thought it would be important that we had on the record a, a legal opinion from town council on that spot zoning. Did, the proponent did a great job, you know, explaining why they believed and town council was very much along those lines. But I thought it would be good for the record to have our town council have it in writing. So that's, that's that. Welcome back.
At least I'm not in the car, right? Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Robert Buckley, Reuben Bronstein. I'd introduce everyone, but we don't want to clutter your minutes. But I just want to give a brief.
We're old friends now.
I want to give a brief overview of what we've done since the last meeting, including the technical issues. We have been corresponding with the town, particularly the moderator. We understand the procedures. There'll be two or three of us in attendance at town meeting, only to be there if asked and the, and the body recognizes us if a question were to come up. We, hopefully, we're going to participate in the Heritage Day. Unfortunately, it was canceled. As an aside, if anyone eats candy or bottled water, we have plenty of both.
I think that was the first time. Does anyone ever heard of Heritage Day being canceled before?
So if someone, if you have someplace, maybe we'll bring it tomorrow. We are preparing at the council and aging to answer any questions tomorrow. But we have plenty, so.
The senior center would probably be very appreciative.
And then we'll be in attendance at town meeting. And I have seen the opinion of Mr. Talaman. And I, I, that's, we indicated at the beginning, that's been our position. I do think, not related to the project, but you can ask any questions you want. I would just like to thank you for your professionalism and your courtesy. From a regulatory standpoint, this is how the process is supposed to work through the planning board, that there's a dialogue, there's a vetting of the issues. And what comes out the other end hopefully is better than what was submitted. You know, that's, that is how the process from a public standpoint. And it's a lot of work. And as I always say, the people on local boards, the residents of the town don't see the amount of work that is done. And look, we get paid for it and we on this side of the table and we have the resources. You ask very perceptive and very good questions. And I think that the final document reflects that dialogue. I know on behalf of the team, I hope that town meeting sees the wisdom of this and that we have an opportunity to work with the planning board to make this a reality through the permitting process because it does have to go through the permitting process and all the usual issues will be addressed and hopefully in a timely and efficient manner. But we're ready to go and we welcome the opportunity to continue that process and the dialogue on a going forward basis. But if you have any specific questions, we're happy to answer them. As I said, we have most of the team here.
Thank you very much. I, I think that you, your team has been very easy to work with and very collaborative too. And I personally appreciate that you have taken all our comments to heart and it has been reflected in what I hope will be an easily passed article at town meeting. Thank you. Ms. Houlihan?
No, I have no questions or comments. I mean, I, I would just again say thank you for the collaborative process. I think I definitely started with my, what do they say? Yeah, on guard. And I think that was well, you know, we productively figured out a solution. I do think it might be important for us as the planning board to, I, I think we are expected to hear either people suggesting about why the planning board submitted, you know, why we felt it should be one process through the permitting. I know it came up at Select Board. But I think that in the actual writing of the bylaw, in other parts of our code, such as downtown district and the Business Village District, in order to consolidate the hearing process and to really make it easier for proponents to put forward projects, we have asked that in this bylaw, the planning board, we will have site plan oversight, that's mass general law, but that we, we, we would be the special permit granting authority. And so we do think, and I believe the proponent also is in agreement, as well as Talar, Mr. Talaman and Select Board, that this is a very cohesive process. It makes the point A to point B much more efficient for the proponent. It eliminates a lot of redundancy with a butter notification and different processes and fees. And so we do think it's one single step towards a process. And it is also in our bylaws within the downtown district. It's in the bylaw for Business Village. So this is not a standalone process. And I just wanted the, the town and those going to the town meeting on Monday night to recognize that we're not trying to throw anything in there, but we are trying to, what we've heard repeatedly from proponents is that it's a very convoluted process in Southborough. So if we can make this streamlined, that's what we're aiming to do. So I think it was just important. I don't know if there's anything I missed that we should mention, Mimi, but I think we all advocate for that process to be pursued in, as the bylaw is written today. So again, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment without getting into the local politics? Because, and I don't know, but I do think from a, from an efficiency standpoint, from a consistency standpoint, it makes a lot of sense to have on a very complex project, which will, it will be complex. There'll be a lot of moving parts and issues that we're prepared to address. You know, what, what I often tell a lot of boards that I go before, a site plan in today's world, particularly on a major project, is really vetted. It's reviewed. It's, it's a detailed process. And the conditions that you impose on a site plan are often the same conditions you would impose on a, on a special permit. There might be some wording and different orientation. But in my mind, to have those conditions tied directly into the plans and what was discussed makes a lot of sense. I think as, it's a collaborative process. It's a give and take and it's a lot of issues. And what you want to do is make it as efficient as possible. But I honestly, from our standpoint, it does make for a seamless presentation and resolution of issues. But I'll leave it to the local politicians.
Thank you. Mr. Murray?
Well, I couldn't have said all that better myself. And thank you, Marnie, for verbalizing that. I just want to thank you as well. I think I, I think you just said that the process coming out is maybe better than the product going in or something like that. I, I agree. I think it's, it's, at least from my perspective, I think it's an article that hangs together well. I think it's a, a zoning, you know, change that also hangs together well. I very much would hate to see somebody try to get in there and move the words because we've spent so much time on the words. And I think we're down to commas, I heard tonight. And those commas make a difference. And so I would ask anybody watching and also going to town meeting, please don't change any commas and please don't change any words. Because there's been a, a real collaborative effort. I mean, really also across the boards, the input that we've received. Each, each one of us individually has received a lot of comments. You don't maybe see that behind the scenes, but our neighbors and our friends and people who aren't our friends are telling us also what they think. And so we've tried to take all that into consideration. And I feel as well that the, the article is really the best that we could do. So I want to thank you for that and for being collaborative with us.
Madam Chair, if I could, exactly how it should, because I don't want to be redundant. But a project of this magnitude or any large project, usually you have an applicant or a user that does not have feet on the ground in the community. So they come in with something that looks and feels like something that worked elsewhere or, you know, was responsive to the issues they've heard. They don't have the local knowledge that the planning board has. And you have your constituents that weigh into you behind the scenes. And that's important information because, as I oftentimes say to communities, we want it to work as much as you want it to work. And if it works well, then everyone wins. And, you know, that's what we, as, I think the first meeting, I said, it's our job to get you the information you need to resolve your issues. And I, and anyone who works on this project from our side, those are their marching orders. That if you have a question of Jay, town council has a question or whatever, our responsibility is to get that and make this project be responsive to the local view of how things should be in Southborough because every community is different. And you don't want to see good projects go down because of confusion. That's why having the consistency and the integration of, of the process makes a lot of sense. And I'll be quiet.
Ms. Brascio?
Thank you. And I, again, I, second and third, everything that's been said here. I think this has been a really good process. You know, just to kind of piggyback a little bit to what Marnie said. And I think she was very succinct in, in what she said and how she said it. But this is one project or one zoning change that's for specifically one parcel, basically. We're not looking to change authority of site plan throughout the bylaw. It's, it's specific to this. And one of the things, I was on the Select Board for six years before this. And one of the things that we constantly heard was about streamlining the process, being business friendly, bringing business into town. And I think this gives us an opportunity to test this and on a potential big project. And I look forward to working with you. And if anyone feels any slights from any other boards, it isn't that. This is just, again, something that we've heard about. I know Alan was on EDC and EDC has been pounding that door for many, many years. And again, we have an opportunity to see how it works and if it works. And I, I would hope that the, you know, the residents would see the amount of, of time and energy that we've all put in here through these hearings. So I just, I thank you for that. I, I think it's been a very collaborative and very open process. And I think as a whole, the citizens of Southborough will see that hopefully at town meeting. So thank you.
Mr. Belniak?
I'm struggling to find anything net new that's substantial to enter. This is the peril, I suppose, of being in the fourth spot. So nothing else to offer. Thank you for all your efforts.
And in, in closing, as I said, I hope the town meeting sees the merits of this. You know, sees the work that has gone in from the town side. And I, I would hope and wish that we have an opportunity to deliver because nothing makes me more happy to see that this was a process that jump-started something. And, and it will jump-start. And we'll, you'll be sick of us by the time you're done.
I just want to piggyback on what some of the others said. So the, the, the special permit is shared between zoning board and the planning board. The planning board has the sole jurisdiction under site plan approval. The planning board is the special permit granting authority for the downtown and the village business, as Marnie said, the adaptive reuse of historic buildings, low impact development, common driveway, major residential development in commercial large ground mounted solar. So most of the more recent zoning changes have had the planning board be the special permit granting authority. And historically, the reason for much of that was because much of the, our zoning law was written in the late eighties and early nineties. And at that time, the planning board was slammed with subdivisions. We had over 50 something subdivisions in, in the nineties. So they, and I know from reading back minutes specifically on the over 55, that they just couldn't do that special permit. So they pushed it towards the zoning board of appeals. There aren't those subdivisions now. We don't have the land left. And having a consolidated process doesn't add any more work for the, for the planning board. This project already requires, as well as the special permit for the use, it requires a special permit for low impact development. That is under the, the planning board. So we would be doing site plan in that special permit. It just makes sense that everything is together for one consolidated process. So I wonder if with our report to town meeting, we should have some statement on why that was changed and get that out there, out front of it? Okay. We'll work on that for, for Monday's meeting. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Matt Probst, 31 Woodland Road. I've missed previous planning board meetings, but I wanted to share a brief statement about this, this project. First of all, thank you so much for your, for your work on this project. I want to voice my strong support for this project. I have done a little bit of research on Costco. Costco, obviously, it's been heavily discussed, the, the amount of jobs, good paying jobs that this would bring the community. This would be a significant investment in an underutilized site in town. This would be, also capture a significant amount of retail leakage to neighboring towns. Inspired by my role in the municipal technology committee, we do an annual survey of Southborough residents and understand where do they shop? What did, what are they interested in attracting to town? And time and time again, year after year, we see that our residents, residents of Southborough want to see us to, us to attract retail and grocery. And what a better way to attract a grocery store that tops the list to Consumer Reports in the Northeast for grocery stores, also for pharmacies and for hearing aids. This is a, a great store to, to attract. Also, we know many, many towns are out there fighting for this store. Significantly out West, they do a lot of monetary incentives. We don't do that Northeast, but we need, we know that there are still fights for this, this store. You might know that Kingston and Plymouth right now are both vying for who can attract a Costco. And that both towns have put together these zoning to preempt and say, to try to attract it. We're, of course, not being asked to, to relax our laws or to give up any tax revenue, et cetera. We're just asked to do this one, one simple thing. So thank you for all your work for, for this and strongly in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Just to be clear, town meeting is approving zoning and not a project, just so there's not any confusion there. But it's fully expected that that will come next. Anybody else? Anyone online?
Seven attendees, no hands raised.
Mimi, can I ask a process question?
Certainly.
So at town meeting, are you going to be answering? Are you going to be up on the stage? Or are you just going to be called upon to answer any zoning questions that may come up?
I think I was volunteered to answer any zoning questions. I don't think there's a stage anymore. I think they, they, yeah. So I'll be, I'll be available.
Sure.
Also, the moderator was reminded by me, who was, I was reminded by Mimi, that by mass general law, the moderator can't take a vote without a reading of the planning board memo. So that's what, so Mimi will also be providing that prior, the moderator's choice, whether that goes before or after the presentation by the Select Board.
And then in that report, we'll have whatever statement we decide as well as our, our, so we'll vote on Monday at our meeting at 5:30. And we'll review our report and have a statement on planning board as special permit granting authority. Anything else? Anyone else? Still no hands in Zoom land?
No, only six attendees, no hands raised.
They're dropping like flies. So we'll continue this?
I make a motion to continue the proposed zoning amendment to add highway major retail to 174-2B to six, 5:30 on October 27th at pre STM meeting at Trotter.
My second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Belniak, yes?
Thank you very much.
Thank you again for your professionalism and I look forward, hopefully, to be before you again.
Awesome. Thank you.
See you Monday.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, proposed zoning amendment to amend language for accessory dwelling unit, ADU. Ms. Houlihan? language for accessory dwelling unit, ADU. Ms. Houlihan.
Perfect. So, what I could do is just present the presentation that I plan to take on on Monday night. And Colleen, if I might ask you to share that presentation.
And while she's doing that, I just want to add that town council opined that it would be a simple majority vote.
Oh, okay. Marnie, can I just ask, what we were provided, is this the handout?
That's the handout for the tables.
Okay, thank you.
And both the presentation and the handout are in, on the planning board webpage under Warren articles.
Okay, so I might have to go sit in front because I can't turn around and wrench my neck.
Welcome, Ms. Houlihan.
Hello, town meeting. Welcome. And tonight I'm presenting Article 9 to amend the zoning bylaw for the accessory dwelling unit. Next slide, please. So, just a quick reminder, what is an accessory dwelling unit? It's a self-contained housing unit. So it has a kitchen, a place to sleep, and facilities for personal hygiene. It's on the same lot as a principal dwelling. An ADU, however, maintains a separate entrance, whether directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor, shared with the principal dwelling. And an ADU comes in many shapes and styles. Some of those are presented on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. So why are we hearing about Southborough amending the ADU bylaw? Didn't we just do this last year? Well, in fact, at annual town meeting, the town voted no for an ADU overhaul. And that's what we had shared, is significant language to change and update the ADU bylaw on the book. The town said, you know what, we don't really want to do that. Let's just accept what mass general law has said for a by right ADU. So today, we need this town to think about and actually approve the Article 9, which is to administratively amend the bylaw so we comply with that law that we approved or accepted from mass general law. So, the next slide. What exactly are we cleaning up? Or what is administrative of this? So there's really kind of seven main points. So, throughout the bylaw, we're replacing the term apartment with dwelling unit. We're removing the current definition and replacing with the state definition of ADU, while still retaining that no mobile home or a travel trailer, it would be included as a definition of an ADU. We're removing the ADU from the IP district for the sole reason is we don't have any residential dwellings in the IP district, and an ADU has to accompany a principal dwelling. So we've just removed that language from that district. We've added the state ADU by right requirements into all districts, again, except for the IP district, which we're striking. We're retaining our code. And our code allows for anything over the by right legal limits of mass general, which is 900 square feet, or half of the gross floor area of a principal dwelling. And we're allowing any resident of Southborough to continue to be able to build an ADU, but that would be through a special permit process. So we just needed to update that language. We retain incentives under the adaptive use of historic buildings. So really, no language has been changed there. And we've removed the cap on the percentage of number of ADUs that the town can have. So, believe it or not, when this first was placed in our town code, we had a 5% cap that no more than 5% of the homes in Southborough could have an ADU. Well, we now know mass general law says it's a right to have them. And so we decided that should probably be stricken. So, as you can see, those seven bullet points, very straightforward changes on the cleanup. Next slide, please. So what will change in our town zoning? We, passing the zoning law, will update the language to be in harmony with the state. No one wants a conflict. Retain our citizens' rights to build an ADU with a special permit that exceeds the state limits of gross floor area, which is greater than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or greater than 900 square feet. And we've provided clarity in the bylaw language. So, this next series of slides, I had not intended to go through. We've provided these as handouts to everybody in the hall. So you certainly can go through those. We've highlighted what was current and what is current in the bylaw and what we're proposing. And if you go through these slides, and maybe we can click through very quickly, you will see that all the changes that I just spoke about, those seven bullet points, are exactly what have changed in the bylaw. So, any, I think that's it for my presentation. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to address those.
Thank you, Marnie. I just have one picky uni thing to say about the removing the ADU from the IP district. So the by right is, the state law, the by right is, ADUs are allowed by right in all single-family zoning districts, and the IP is not a single-family zoning district.
I will correct that. Thank you.
But fabulous. Thank you. Mr. Murray.
Thank you. That was nicely done, Marnie. I don't think anybody can do anything better than that. It's very succinct. I think it's perfect. Yeah, thanks.
Ditto.
Ms. Brashio.
Thank you. Ditto. I think it's perfect. And I think the handout is great, by the way, as well. Thank you.
Same. I especially like how you say when you get to the meaty slides, you're not going to go over them because it's the same thing that you just said. You might get called upon to do one, but I think in the interest of time and everyone in the meeting, it's going to be preferred. So, nice job.
Thank you. And I would like to throw a shout out to Tim Lit, because he helped with the color coding. So I didn't use color codes that would be confusing. Hopefully, they're clear on those printouts.
Not red or green.
Not red and green.
I did notice that.
Yes, sir.
Tim, Woodland Road. Just one additional comment. The first time you reference IP district, you should really spell it out as industrial park, because the casual attendees won't recognize it.
Excellent point. I'll make that change in that presentation. Thanks, Tim.
Any other questions or comments on the ADU? Anyone in the audience?
We have three attendees, no hands raised.
Yeah, so just to reiterate for all our millions of viewers, we're just changing the term accessory apartment to accessory dwelling unit, which is what is referenced in state law. We are updating our code, so it references the by right use, which is required by state law. And the special permit stays the same, with the exception of removing that 5% cap, because the state law does not allow a cap on the by right. It would be very confusing to try and figure that out with special permits. And we haven't really kept up with that anyway. And then removing the accessory dwelling units from the industrial park district, because it's not a single-family zoning district. And that is where the ADUs are required by right and state law. So, thank you, Ms. Houlihan. You did a great job on this. And I think we're can continue this hearing till 10:27?
I'm clueless over here.
I also have a draft report, planning board report to town meeting for this article.
Yes, and I will read that as part of the presentation. So I make a motion to continue the public hearing for the proposed zoning amendment to amend language for accessory dwelling units to 535 on October 27th, 2025.
My second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor. Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Belnyak, yes.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 2 East Main Street, multifamily building, major site plan approval, 2 East Main Street, multifamily buildings, special permit downtown district. Can you update us?
Yes. You got my email, Peter?
I did, thank you.
You're welcome. So, just give you a quick update. As we know, these two public hearings, one is for major site plan approval, and one is for special permit downtown district, which will also incorporate a special permit for the FAR being above .40 required to have a special permit from the planning board. It's the last meeting on September 29th. Since then, this afternoon, we received Fussin O'Neill comments on submission number five, which was submitted right after, well, submission number four was in peer review, and then Peter supplied us with an updated set, which was provided to Fussin O'Neill. So they got that last week, the beginning of last week, I believe. And then they provided that today. I started drafting the decisions for the major site plan and the special permit downtown district. Haven't gotten quite to the conditions yet, and I know there were some specific conditions that I'd like to draft and have Peter review before we finalize them. But I don't have them all written out yet, but they're started. That being said, I had a couple of minor questions on the submittal myself. I'm not sure they were picked up in the Fussin O'Neill review. So after the planning board goes through their comments, if you haven't addressed them, I'll just add some minor things. Nothing deal-breaking, I don't think. And that's what I have.
Welcome, Mr. Beemis.
Thank you.
Would you like, have anything?
I have nothing further to offer. I was coming here a bit upset, but at 6 o'clock, I got the memo that Fussin O'Neill was commenting the way they had the last time they commented. So I'm satisfied. I just want to close this out and be done. So, I would like to try to move to that. I guess you're going to meet before your town meeting. Is it possible that we can try to wrap this up, so I can get a decision and try to focus on what needs to be done versus worrying about getting a decision and waiting two weeks or three weeks? Because it's just been three weeks. I just hate to wait again. I can avoid it. So that would be what I'd ask you to do if you can, because we don't have a decision in front of us tonight. And I, you can only do what you can do. I get it. So that's it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Ms. Houlihan.
Yeah, I had, I had no changes or, you know, constructive criticism. I see the updates to the photometric plans been included, all the details on the lighting that was included, the hardscape calculations, which we asked for. So I saw that was all added in as we had requested. And I saw that you had asked for the, and I lost my piece of paper. What is it called?
Waiver.
Thank you. The waiver, which, again, I fully support. I'm only one vote at this point, but other than that, I had no issues with what Fussin O'Neill came back with. And I think to Mr. Beemis's points, there was nothing that was different, really, from the prior submissions. So I'm in a good place. Thanks, Peter.
Mr. Murray.
Hi, Peter. Good to see you. I'm sorry, I'm just looking at this for the first time. I think I was driving here at 6:02 when it came in. So I, first of all, I want to say appreciate that you gave us a sort of advanced copy of submission number five. I think it is. At first, I wasn't exactly sure. I said, oh, I think we're on number four. But now I understand why you did it and appreciate that you've taken care of some of the things that we've asked you to. And I'm just looking at the Fussin O'Neill letter right now, and I don't have any concerns. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm all set. Thanks.
Thanks.
Ms. Brashio.
Thank you. I also have no, no concerns at this point. Peter, thank you for updating everything. I know at some points, it may seem a little nitty-gritty, but at the end, I know, you know, as Marnie said, especially on the lighting, to have it all in one place on the plans is just so important. So, thank you very much.
I haven't looked at Fussin O'Neill at all.
You can read it. It's the same letters they gave us last time. It literally is. There were three topics, and they reiterated those three topics, and they require the waiver, which I've asked for formally in writing.
So one, so one thing that's not in the waiver is why?
Why? I just feel like the lighting will drop to a level that's probably not prudent for this use. I'd be happy, if you mandate it, and we do it at 2.5, we'll just bring the light levels down. It's not that it can't be done. It's just that there won't be as many lights. And it's really, the parking lot lighting is the one area where, if you want to limit all the building lighting, we can, but I just don't think it makes a lot of sense to do so. And frankly, a street light.
So I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing.
It's just the reality of lighting.
It's just the waiver just says, I want a waiver. And I think that the proper process is what you just said, for safety or.
Yeah, no, I said, oh, the waiver was literally written from what section and verse. It wasn't to rationalize it. I've given you all the rationalizations in the prior submissions. This is strict, the waiver strictly to ask for the waiver, what section and what verse. That's it. I've given you the duck.
We have waiver requests in order for the decision to be written even faster, is that the waiver request says, I want a waiver from this, and here's why. And then we take that, if it's granted, and we put it right into the decision. So there's no concern. And I think we can work with, I can work with you on that at some point.
I can give you all the things that I've already given you separately. I didn't put it on this form.
It's nice if it's all in one spot. It just makes it streamlined for the decision.
Yeah, I mean, really, I just feel like I tried to cut it back everywhere we could, and there's just no way to make it lower. It's just not, not having a light is really what it would come down to. I don't think that makes a lot.
Yeah, I understand that. It's just for, for the record, it's important that that's spelled out, and not just that we willy-nilly give out waivers.
No, I understand. But I did provide it several occasions today.
You haven't provided that?
I have, yeah. No, in my cover letters, I've explained it about the threshold being low, because I was contrasting this with other uses in the prior. And actually, I eliminated the section on the, because it would be much higher, obviously, for an LZ3. But the LZ2, I think when they, when you did your downtown district, or downtown district got created, all they did was roll in what was in the, in the village business district. And they should have, would have been nice to have another category, just recognizing what that type of use is. That's all. You know, with the residential use here, I just want to have enough lighting in the parking lot. Frankly, if it had been retail with residential, I'd want more. I'd like, I'd like the lumen level to be even higher. And I probably would have asked for a higher waiver, had we had any retail component with this. But we don't have any retail anymore.
I think it was the April cover letter that came in, where you had all the rationale on the zoning. And I would agree, I think, on retrospect, and it's maybe something I will tackle with the lighting, outdoor illumination bylaw, is that that downtown district was rolled in into, in a pre-existing, and it didn't really take into effect multi-use or more retail. And so I think the rationale is there, but I agree. I think it's probably language we just need to incorporate in the waiver, so it's clear.
I mean, effectively, in the downtown district, you probably have far more illumination there than you might realize, just from your streetlights alone, because of the density of them.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think it's right for us just to rely on that to be enough. So that's why we, you know, we put in the lighting and really got it to the minimum that I think is acceptable. So, and that just.
Yeah. So I'm not, I'm not arguing, and it's just when you go back in 30 years and you look at it, it's like, why did this Beemis guy get the waiver?
All right. All right. Well, I'll bring, I'll bring in what we did before, then. I'm sorry that it's just coming up tonight.
And just for clarification, you have the, the open space square footage is called out on the plans. I appreciate that. Can you point to where those are? So the 900 square feet?
There were total in different zones, if I remember right.
Colleen, can you put Plan Page 3 up?
Yeah, so we did north along the parking lot edge at 900 square feet. That's where the abreviations are.
Oh, okay.
And then west um, was along the um, parking lot, so that's where the um, the flowering trees are, the dogwoods. And um, then it was along uh, East and Newton collectively, because it's again, two street fronts.
Okay.
Again, being a corner lot, there was a, the bylaw was tough to meet, but that's how we got all those numbers to, to work.
So nine?
Nine, yep, forty-two, and twenty-four oh eight, all the way down.
Yeah.
Yep, and then, then, then it would stop at the building, and then you do the front.
Alright.
So it was those strips, and then there's a small strip, obviously, to the Newton end too, but, yep, and then the little space up to Newton, there's a small piece there, yeah, because that's all your street front. Except for the driveway opening, exactly, yeah. And then we did plant that, um, which we talked about at the last meeting, the, the plantings that go.
Oh, yeah.
Not just the trees, the...
Right, yep.
The first.
Yep. Um, so as far as closing tonight, I'm not comfortable with that, I haven't even looked at the uh, the Fussin O'Neil, I didn't, you know, I can be outvoted, but I will mention that there were eight continuances on this, so we've worked with you. Um, this did come in on the tenth, which was like, a week, and Fussin O'Neil usually takes at least two to come back, so they really tried to get that out as fast as they could. They were doing the other plan, and then this one showed up.
But, but this plan was really just to take care of Karina, honestly, all I did was, on the title page, put in all the sheets, and we rolled the architectural into it, so everything was under one roof.
Right.
The photometric had been a separate drawing.
Yeah.
It really wasn't anything new here. I, 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 I just, I really just want to complete the process, so I know you're gonna be meeting, uh, you're gonna have a posted meeting, you know, is it possible to use that event, which is in a week, otherwise, when are you meeting again? Is it three weeks?
Yep.
Yeah, that's, I just don't feel like that's fair.
So, Peter, so it's fair that you've continued eight hearings with no new information? It was on our agenda, and people came, and there was nothing new?
No, I did disclose when, when we had time, and the reason for that, as you know, that there were, the rug got pulled out from under my feet in this process, too. I, I, thi, this has been evolving for me, as much as it's probably evolved for you folks too.
Correct.
But you drafted the bylaw, not me, I didn't, I'm trying to work with it, and, and then all of a sudden, with building department, and the different building inspector came in, his interpretation was not what I had expected, and, and we had to take an about face, a total about face. I still maintain that I think the best project for downtown is a mixed use. No one has taken the time to even think of, you, you just rushed in another bylaw from an out-of-town group to do something on Route Nine, here I go, now I'll get off my box and get on another one. That's great, that's wonderful, I think that was the best thing you could have done for the town, but no one did a damn thing about downtown, and then, and they know there's a limitation, this was a ridiculously lang, uh, definition, they would put it in definitions, so you can't change it. I can't even go to ZBA and ask them to modify it, because it's a definition, so by definition, you can't really do a two-story building and get anywhere, or a three-story building, because the moment you do, and you put that second use there, I have to go down in size. So I, 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 I'm just, I'm coming at this as effectively as I can, I'm reluctantly doing an apartment building here. I don't really want to, but, but I have no choice, because the zoning doesn't work, and no one's made an attempt to change it either. No, no, zero attempt. And here's a town meeting that they could have done so, so, you know, here we go.
I don't, so, we tried to change other things at this town meeting, and um, we were told, no, we had to fight for the ADU, which is just administrative, so, no, it's not that easy.
I got it.
But, so, do you have an idea of what you'd like to see changed in that bylaw?
Well, a multi-story building is what the bylaw allows, and I think mixed use made all the sense in the world. I would have liked to have seen retail on the first floor, but I can't, because the moment we go up to that extra level, the density has to go down, and the math formula doesn't work, you can...
So it's if, it's the floor area ratio, what's the issue?
The definition, definition says that uh, fi, fifty percent of the first floor, and then if you go above that, it's forty percent, so if you just think about the math, how can you take forty percent of that first floor and e, expect to get it on multi-levels? You can't. It's, 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 it's on a small, on a small, but even on any lot, frankly, but particularly on a small lot, but the moment you go up, you have to, your density goes down even more, you're punished, basically, you're punished for trying to do a creative project here. And I don't know why that was put in definitions, because I would, I would love to have changed it, actually, the building inspector said the same thing, boy, this is kind of crazy.
Well, so, so the reason it was written that way was that there was a desire to be able to put residential on the first floor, so that you would, could have an accessible unit, but they still wanted it to be mixed use and not have like, an ATM, and then all residential, and considered that a mixed use. So that's why that is written like that.
I, I just don't see the scenario, i, i, if anything, the, it should maximize flexibility, because it is so difficult, this has been a, such a difficult process. I've had to start and stop, yes, and, and, and ask you to hold my application in abeyance, because I'm trying to figure this out, and work with different building inspectors, too, because it's, it's a different in, interpretation ultimately on that zoning bylaw, at the end of the day. So the safest route here was just to stick with a straight residential project, get it approved, and then s, s, see where we go from here. But I have to say, I'm still reluctant to want to do that, I just don't think it makes a lot of sense to me, that's not why I had set out to do all of this, but I have to...
So that, um, downtown district, how many years did that take, Lisa?
Yeah.
It took years, we had, we had a zoning consultant, we had several attorneys working on it, so it's not like, you know, Yahoo in the back room, just, you know, spit it out, there, there was work and thought that went into, to that for many years.
And I didn't feel as though it was my place to come in and, and shape a bylaw to meet my need. I see what happens when you do that, I think it's a grant, it's a good idea, it's very effective, uh, but, but I didn't think it was my place, so I didn't do it. Um, and now I'm...
That was, that was the catalyst for that bylaw, was your original project that wasn't allowed in the code.
Right, right, and, and, and I, and I thought that what we had put together, trying to frankly bastardize it to get it in, was still a better project than where I'm, I'm gonna end up, but, but at the same time, but now that we have a bylaw, and there's something to work around, the definition really is what hamstrings you, and there's no way around it. So without it being changed, nothing can change, so, so i, it, it's, it's not even waiverable, it's not varianceable, it's just cannot be, because it's a definition, a definition...
It gets, it, it does get worse with more units, right? If you have less units, then it doesn't, so, and I think one of the concerns during the downtown district, um, back and forth passing that zoning bylaw, was the concern of that area, that they didn't want...
All residential.
Big lot, big multi-unit buildings, and so there was a lot of discussion on how to contain that, and that's probably one of the reasons why that FAR came out the way it did, because they didn't want, you know, three lots being purchased by one developer, and then putting in twenty units in the downtown area.
But it's just so difficult, because there's not a lot of land available to work with anyways, and even when you do find it, it's gonna have some limitation, like this, it has limited on where the soil absorption system can be, so, so you're capped, and, and so it, it, and I had to go through that process, as you know, so that was part of, the holdback was one, to get to the use, then it was two, okay, now we have to go back through that process again, and then I, the neighbors don't come to these meetings anymore, because I think they're either satisfied, or would give up, or whatever the case may be, I don't want to speak for any of them, but there was a time when there was opposition to a project there, which was like, wh, why? You know, why aren't we trying to get something to, to come there? And now I feel like that there's been a, a lot more support, I get support from a lot of folks, saying, you've really got to get something to happen down there, but I still don't think it's what, it's gonna be what I wanted it to be personally, but it's a project, so I have to start somewhere, and this is it. Um, so going back to where you're at, if you're not, if you're gonna ask me to continue, I am gonna do so very reluctantly, because I need your vote, um, and I would just ask that I don't, I don't, I have to wait, three weeks is gonna put me, you know, into November.
Okay. Take a deep breath, Peter. Do you think you can have a decision done by Monday?
It's tight. Um, what I do think is that um, I don't, if, if the planning board members have any specific conditions that they recall, that they could tell me tonight, if you could remember anything in your notes of the conditions, um, I know that, uh, looking through, we got the Board of Health information.
Yeah.
That's good, we didn't, um...
We pretty much have everything incorporated into the plans.
Did you provide a truck turning radius?
Well, again, if you recall, we, we went through that for the turning radius on the site, so we can get in there with...
During the mixed use phase?
Right, but then the fire department ruled about the fact that they wouldn't be trying to get their fire apparatus into the...
They could access it from the street.
Right, but that, ambulance...
Anyway, that's right, that's right, because there was a comment, there was still an ethanol comment in that, but they weren't privy to, um, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't there just a comment? We were just looking...
Well, we'd have to have second means of e, for the truck to come through, and then...
Right.
You'd be putting them at the stop sign...
Yeah.
On, on Newton Street, which doesn't...
So I don't think Fussin O'Neil was privy to the...
Alright, I remember that now.
Station, that's right.
Yeah.
That the, and I remember that, too.
Oh, the other question, is there a curfew time for the lighting, or a reduced lighting, or is it on twenty-four seven?
I mean, it's the use, I, I, I wouldn't think that we'd be having to, to do that and shut it off, if somebody comes out at night in their, this resident mi, this residential structure, they need to have lighting, so I, if you could mandate it, I suppose, but I don't think so, I, I see it being on at night, off in the day, obviously, so it would run through the overnight.
Hold on.
So I, I would suggest that lighting condition, that we can do a look back, see what that looks like if there's an issue, have it uh...
Yep.
Amended after a year, or whatever.
And then the standard...
Fixtures are low, that, you know, they, they, we, we tried to cut this back, I mean, it, the shielded stroke fixtures, and, yeah.
No, yep, and um, hold on, give me one second, I just want to... It's mixed use.
So I think, like, the highway major retail, so on, we have an hour, five thirty to six thirty, so we have highway major retail and ADU, I don't think there's, we have to write reports, I don't think that that will take a huge amount of time, is the board think that we can um, settle this then? Also, this hearing, close it and vote on it?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty comfortable, Mimi, I mean, I'm at the stage where I would ready, we'd be ready to say, you know, a draft approval until Monday, when we can kind of review, what are those issues, but I didn't have any specific notes around conditions.
Okay.
So I would, I would support it.
Yep, me as well, standard conditions, um, but, yeah, if, if we can see a copy in advance, that would be best.
Yeah, that'll be much easier, because the standard conditions are, I have the old Two East Main decision from previously, although it was mixed use, but, and then I have what we just did for two fifty turnpike, there's a lot of standard conditions there.
Yep.
I think I can, I can do that. Um, I just didn't, I wanted to go through everything to make sure I didn't miss something from the town departments that they were concerned with. Um, did you determine if you...
Are you okay with that, Ms. Brashio?
I am, thank you.
You have to sprinkler the building?
Yeah.
You do, right? Okay, I think that was in there. Um, it wasn't... The police department had, um, didn't need anything further, the fire department had their standard memo of comments. Um, the um, Southborough Public Access Committee just wanted to make sure that you meet all requirements there. There was no sign detail in the plans, there is one there that was, okay, and then on the architectural plan, one thing I noted that perhaps you could fix, or maybe um, in the future, architectural plans and elevations, not just the scale, but the actual height, because the architect left little markers for the height, but he never put the height.
Okay.
So I, and then that's how I discovered that the scale was wrong in the last submission, because I had to actually measure it, to see how high you were to meet the zoning code.
Okay.
That's all, it just helps if, if the architect's stamping it puts the right dimension on, so I don't think that's a big deal for this, because the scale is on the plan. Yeah, I don't, and if I do um, come upon a condition that is in the prior meeting notes, because I take the notes, then I'll incorporate it, and I always send the applicant a copy of the draft in, to Mimi at the same time, in case they have any comments, so it's vetted on both sides, so it's not unfair, you know what I mean? If you're, if you have a problem with it, then we'll mitigate that, so I...
I mean, with the office building, you know, you have, you did have a decision, so there's something to platform off of.
Yeah, yes, if it's standard, because I, I don't recall anything other than, there's no hours of operation for...
No, residence.
Residential, right. Um, yeah, and ADA compliance is handled through building permit...
And, and we put it in the notes.
Oh, and...
The affordable unit is...
And codify the, a condition for the one affordable unit, yeah. And when it's affordable, um, we probably have to specify to what measure it's affordable, affordable to get on the subsidized housing inventory.
Yeah, it's defined, it's, your, your, your regulation defined it, and we have to follow that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I think I can do it for Monday, or, if there's nothing really unusual in the conditions.
Should we start at five fifteen, do you think? And get this out of the way? Can everyone make it?
Do you feel like you need to see a draft decision already, if it's standard conditions, to, 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 to vote, or, you know, it's your preference, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
Nice if it could come, like, that day, like, I, I know you've got a lot on your plate, if you can come someday on Monday, if, if you can do Tuesday, Wednesday.
Today, Monday?
Today's Monday.
Oh, I'm working on it already.
Okay.
So, my goal is to have it done before the end of day tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean? It's just, there's, um, Colleen is out all week.
Yep.
And um, uh, tell us.
Year one, year one.
And um, I get a lot of walk-ins, and it's town meeting time, so I get a lot of calls, and we have pre-construction meetings, and all that's been happening now, everyone's squeezing in the construction beforehand, so my, I'm working on it, I'm just gonna do it until it's done, and then, um, just recall, we have that second kind of sub-special, it's not a subs, but a special permit for the FAR, that I'll incorporate into the special permit decision. You know, there's, the planning board has to grant if it's over point four zero FAR.
Yeah, th, th, just the preamble of that, because you've already had the structure for the special permit on previous applications.
Yeah, it's just gonna be incorporated into that in the findings, and then the condition will just say, and, you know, will recognize this is a special permit also for this.
If you send it to me, and something needs to be put in, I'll put it into.
So will five fifteen on Monday work for you, Peter?
That's fine, yeah, I, I ask it, we just keep moving it along, so I'll be there, thank you.
Do we have a continuance document signed?
Uh, I have to give you one, now that we've agreed to win.
Right here. Okay, and what's...
I didn't bring it with me.
I have it right here.
Okay.
So I'll first make the motion to continue the two public hearings for Two East Main Street multi-family building, major site plan approval, and special permit downtown district to October twenty-seventh at five fifteen PM.
I second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Willian, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Um, I make a motion to extend the public, uh, sorry, the um, decision due dates for Two East Main Street for the MSPA and the SPE, Special Permit Downtown District, we'll extend that to November.
Um, let me tell you, if um, the twenty-seventh, so the thirty-first...
To November, oh, oh, to October.
Yeah.
October thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
My second.
And we're continuing to Oct...
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Willian, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Okay, so you sign this?
Peter, just so you know, we're in room one twenty-eight at the school, it'll be on the posted agenda, but...
Yep, I'm gonna try and post that agenda tomorrow, put it in early, five fifteen, I will do that. I'm just dated here, Peter. I'm just dated here, Peter.
And everyone in town is looking forward to this great new building in that corner lot.
So, Mimi, can I ask a process question for, for our next meeting, for town meeting? If, because it's at 5:15, if, if anyone is interested, I would be happy to pick up pizza or sandwiches or something. Or if you plan on eating prior to the meeting, that's okay, too. But, just thinking, or, you know, it, it, depending on what everybody wants, I mean, I would be happy to shoot out an email, and I could pick up subs or pizzas or whatever, if, if, if everybody's-
Be on that favor.
Can eat and do our meeting at the same time.
Just pull that out, and I can put it in fast.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, can I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
You may.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Before nine, yes, Houlihan.
Temeria, yes.
Gracia, yes.
O'Neil, yes.